Of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please be seated. First item on tonight's agenda is approval of the agenda. I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Nelson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, and the motion passes five to zero. For the good of the public, Supervisor Ung is joining us telephonically. From, if you'd like to say, Supervisor Ung.
San Pedro Sula Honduras.
All right. Well, thank you for taking the time to be here. What time is it there?
Just one hour behind you guys.
Okay, great. The consent agenda tonight, items two through nine constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item number two is the approval of the minutes of the June 6th, 2023 meeting. Item three is approval of claims. Item four, Board Administration Heather Van Sickle. A is to approve the notice of property sale resolution for partial number ending in 5002, also known as 3223, 11th Street, for Tuesday, June 27th at 4:35 PM. Item B, approval of the notice of property sale resolution for a partial number ending in 5001, also known as 3223 and a half, 11th Street, for Tuesday, June 27th at 4:37 PM. Item C, approval of the lifting of tax suspension for petitioners who failed to recertify their income or income does not qualify for continued tax suspension. Item five, Human Resources Melissa Thomas. Item A is approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions. Item B, authorization to initiate the hiring process. Item six, from planning and zoning Dan Kresley, is approval to schedule July 11th at 4:45 PM, July 18th at 4:45 PM, and July 25th at 4:45 PM for three public hearings for proposed zoning ordinance text amendments to temporary heavy construction services uses from prohibited uses to conditional uses in the general commercial and highway commercial zoning districts for aggregate crush and screen temporary, asphalt mixing temporary, and concrete mixing temporary. Item seven, from the county treasurer Tina Bertrand, is approval of refund requests for overpayment of taxes for a partial number ending in 7008 in the amount of $147.39. Item eight is juvenile detention Ryan Weber, the approval of a request for contract amendment with Midwest monitoring and surveillance. Item nine, secondary roads from the county engineer Mark Nara, is A, approval of the underground utility permit for Denny Stubbs, and item B, approval of the permit to work in the right of way for Mike Miltonberger. Supervisor Ung, are we assuming that you're back on?
Yep.
Welcome back to the fold. That ends the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Radig, second by Bittenger. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay, and the motion passes five to zero. Moving on to the rest of the agenda, item 10, from the city of Mowville, Jim Fisher, is the discussion of Mowville frontage room, frontage road improvements. This is an informational item, and Mayor Fisher was kind enough to give us some language that's a proposal. And so, first off, I would move to receive that into the record. Motion by Taylor, second by Nelson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, and the motion passes five to zero. So, thank you for coming. Thank you for being here, and we understand you have some city councilmen as well.
Yes, I wanted to do some, I, I, up here several times, I keep telling you, we're excited about Mowville and all the improvements we have going on. We have a very tight-knit community. Everybody supports everybody else. We have Steve Maxwell here now, who's our, head of our economic development group. Joel Robinson, Brett Hayworth, and Tom Conley, who are in the city council. We have Jeannie Kruger now, who is a member of the United Bank of Iowa. Jeremy Rogers just got called up, and he'll be here in a few minutes. I, I guess I were really excited about Mowville. We're excited about our frontage road. The improvements on Highway 20 have helped us, and I think over the next couple of years, more improvements will help us more. I am going to turn this over to Joel Robinson. Joel now is Mowville's city council version of identity about her. Thank you very much.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Joel Robinson, again as Mayor Fisher was mentioning, city council for Mowville. So, the reason that we're here, we came back here in 2018 and 19, just to give a little brief history, right? We're talking about frontage road improvements. At that point in time, I think we're looking at a little bit higher of a cap for projects than, that was doable at that. We're looking around $2 million, right? So, we had the conversations of how can we get frontage road up to par with where it needs to be. We had diverted those funds to a different project at that point in time that I think was previously approved. So, the proposal that I'm presenting tonight is actually for consideration for the fiscal year 2425 budget, so we can get ahead of this. The intent is for us to open up that door, to have the communication with you guys and negotiations, try to figure out how we can get these projects, this project done for frontage road. To go into showing our commitment and what we did, that's what I really wanted to show you guys and demonstrate. So, this front page is just an overview of all the numbers that I calculated on the following, on the pre, the next page. Since 2016, we've added seven businesses. So, we've added the Jensen Funeral Home. Security National Bank is being built right now at this time. Projected completion date still this year, I think, coming up into the fall. Countryman Financial Group, Lewis Drug Pharmacy in Mowville, Mowville Latte Coffee Shop, the Dollar General, and now come back to the Future Medical Clinic. So, the Future Medical Clinic, it's been a couple of year pro, or program that we've had, it's coming to completion. It is fully funded, so we anticipate that that'll start being built here in the very near future. And another part of why we want to get ahead of the project for frontage road. This economic development and the business rebirth of these seven businesses, so these numbers and the increasing of the value is from that 2016, 2017 timeframe, showing that we've increased the property value of one, or 1.9 million. Increased tax revenue, 275,000. And we've put Mowville, City of Mowville has put in $1.2 million worth of projects. What our proposal is for the fiscal year 2425, if you wouldn't mind scrolling down maybe to the last page so everybody can see, is the project. So, throughout the years in 2018 and 19, I think we really started to try and define what is the ownership of frontage road. There was a little bit of discrepancies whether they're second or third, and who owned that 50/50 share. So, that got all settled out in 2019, and we determined that it's a 50/50 cost share between Woodbury County and the City of Mowville. That starts at Second Street. So, in the photos, when you go to Security National Bank, up to Country, or Countryman Financial, we've put in $587,000, or sorry, $505,000 into that project, which was all the infrastructure, street repairs, and the sidewalks, storm sewer, and everything else. So, what we want to do is we want to continue from that point in time, which is our 50/50 cost share with the county, up to Fair Street. So, it's from Third Street all the way east to Fair Street. We want to take frontage road improvements. We want to put in the new 27-foot wide road. The existing road is an old 100-year road that's about somewhere between 18 and 22 feet wide. If you can imagine, not a lot of space passing vehicles is really probably one of the biggest complaints and problems. I think in, you know, back in 2019, we talked about just the mere shape of the road itself, right? It's just aging, right, and starting to show. So, we want to repair the entire road, put in new water, storm sewer, sidewalk, and retaining wall. The city's responsibility, and I guess I'll publicly make one correction here, is the storm sewer will, we're asking that as part of the contract. It's on the next page with you, the commitment there. So, we'll be doing the water, sidewalk, and just bar retaining wall.
So, you're saying to scratch that storm sewer part in terms of the description of the new 27?
Please, yes, that is my fault. So, that will be the City of Mowville's contribution to this project. The estimated project costs, the total for what we have approximated at this point in time is going to be 873,500. Mowville's contribution to this project would be 208,500. And we're asking and proposing that the county come in and pick up the 665,000 for the remaining project. And the reason that we're asking that is that cost share portion. Over the last five years and our contributions to frontage road, if we continue to put in the other 208,000 as that project, that'll bring our total contribution with this project to 1.4 million, which is approximately 55% of the total project to repair frontage road. And though even you at the 665,000 will leave the county's contribution at 45%. On the follow-on page where you have the Excel spreadsheet, I would like to just note that when you're looking at the values and comparing them to the front page, what I have done here is I've just taken the previous value. We were only able to go back to 2017 and a lot of 2019s to collect that data. So, that's where we're showing the increased assessed value and the total property taxes. The property taxes, I only calculated based off of the buildings that were, that were added. I did not include, starting at Subway, so the address of 509 through 615. I left those out since those have been longstanding businesses in Mowville. The estimated tax we did get from the county assessor, this is the projected cost. This does not include business property tax credits. And this is really important for the projection of what the, the Mowville Medical Clinic will bring to the project or to the area. And some additional notes of what our contributions have been over the last five, six years. So, we really wanted to show you that we're committed to this project. This is a priority for us. This is something that we definitely want to continue and, and come, or see brought to fruition. So, hopefully you guys share that same interest and that we can make this happen. I'm available for any questions if you have them.
Thank you very much. Are there questions?
So, you guys are paying 200 grand for a retaining wall for a business there?
So, that's going to include the sidewalks, the water, and the retaining wall that will be necessary to accommodate for the sidewalk there just on the north side of frontage road.
What was that address at?
That address was the Jeff's Bar address, which is going to be 515 frontage road.
Is there any transfer in terms of ownership of any portion of the road at all that's proposed between the county and the City of Mowville in any of this? Or is that something that's not contemplated with this?
Well, I think it is contemplated with it, and I think we've had the discussions. I think the priority for us right now would be able to bring the road up to where it needs to be. But going into the future, I don't think that that would be off the table. I think that the city would be willing to continue the conversations of whether, what our, what our ownership is into the road, but we would still ask that there be contribution prior to accepting that.
Okay. And the only reason I ask that is that's, I mean, some of the discuss, that's discussion that's been bandied about in terms of if there's county contribution, what is going to be the level of ownership or not, or divesting thereof. So, just trying to figure out if that's something that's part of the proposal, or if that's just, it's just a contribution at this point.
Right now, it's just a contribution for the repairs, but we definitely had those conversations. We'll be open to having further conversations about it.
Well, from my standpoint, there's no way we keep, you know, ownership of this road. Like, that, to me, is the first and foremost. We should not own this road. But, you know, as I've stated in the past, I don't think we give a gift of a broken gift. You know, you don't like, give your kid a car and say, oh, by the way, the engine needs replaced.
Correct.
So, I think it's important, if we have any agreement on this, as far as financial contribution, it involves us getting rid of the road.
And if I can ask, what would be your take on that, or the mayor, the city council's take on that? Or is that something that needs or merits for discussion?
Our take in the conversations that we've had, it would be, it would be easier. It would be easier on all parties. It would be easier for us to maintain. We wouldn't have to continue coming back to figure out that 50/50 cost share. So, I think it's reasonable. I think we'd be willing to lean definitely towards taking over the road. I think it just makes sense for all parties. But again, as you stated, not to steal your own words, but you said it very well, that I think before we do that, we don't want to accept a broken gift at this point in time. We'd rather repair the road and then have the conversations of taking the road over from, from that point forward.
Supervisor Nelson?
I drive the, the exact portion of Fair Street West every single morning. And where the new portion of the road is done is unbelievable. I mean, it's been a long time coming to try to get that road up to snuff. And I'm, I'm very proud of Mowville and the work you guys have done there. And, and I agree wholeheartedly with Keith, that I think we need to get the rest of it up to snuff, and then it needs to be your baby going forward. It should have been a long, long time ago. And I really appreciate everybody being here today. I'm not surprised with everybody that's in the crowd and who showed up. But I, I, I like the proposal, and it's something we just, we need to do.
Well, to give an example, you know, the county had a lot over on the west side of Sioux City. They had overgrown trees. It had a broken railing over ravines. And we fixed that railing, and we took the trees down before the City of Sioux City was willing to take it. So, if we're willing to do that for Sioux City, again, a city that has the ability to afford it more than the county in that situation, you know, here's a city that has less ability to afford, and they're willing to be a partner in this, of course, because we have partial ownership. But I think it just makes sense for us to do something. Of course, paying for it, which pot, which bucket, whose funds? That's, I guess, maybe a discussion we need to have, you know, with the engineer, with the finance director.
And I'd like to address that if we can tonight. So, one of the reasons that we put on something for information before action is to have a very good, robust discussion. So, are there other parameters or things that we ought to know from the City of Mowville's perspective that you would like to present, or somebody who's a follow-on, so to speak? And we can have you come back up, but just wanted to make sure that we weren't giving you short shrift.
Brett Hayworth, I just wanted to add, the reason that we're here today in June is to not throw this to you in the middle of your budget. We wanted to give you, our plan is to talk about it now in June, come back like Thanksgiving, December, as you really start the next year budget negotiations. But to give Denny some time, you guys some time, I think, the time, four years ago, Keith, you had mentioned throwing out a proposal, I think, some combination of property taxes and perhaps the local op, or the, maybe it was the Riverboat Funds, perhaps. I think, as if I remember, like, two combinations. So, please look into all those, those possibilities. Please consider this for your budget process next year, because we'll be coming back in a few months to remind you. And hopefully, a more full plan could come from your, you know, from your team of possibly how to fund this.
So, can I ask you a follow-on for that? Very much appreciated. Are you thinking in terms of July 1st and beyond? Not of, obviously, this year, but of the next year in terms of being able to disperse funds? Okay.
Right.
All right. Thank you very much. So, with that, the county engineer's name was invoked, not in vain. Would you be willing to come up, Mark, unless there's something that needs to follow on ahead of? We'd be curious, I think, and I don't want to speak for the whole board, but not only your, thank you, your take, but any response you have, both in terms of funding, but also in terms of follow-on, the divestment, if I'm using the right term, and how you see this issue.
Yeah. The board signed an annexation petition with Mowville, I think it was back in 2015 or 2016, where they agreed to have our properties, and I think it was fairgrounds and all the county properties, incorporated within the town of Mowville, so that, that transfer can occur. In regard to funding on this project, I'm very hesitant to recommend any secondary road funds be used. We do not collect any revenues from the cities in terms of property tax. That money is all funded from the property tax side by our rural residents, and I feel that that's where that money needs to be utilized, is on the rural portions of our road system, not the portions that are immediately adjacent to or shared or partially within the, the relative, the communities that are over 500. Communities under 500, the board owns those roads. And that's really kind of changed the complexion of being able to use secondary road funds, because we're already seeing a significant diversion of funding that's available to the rural road system going to those small communities, and I think it's necessary, in many cases, to help keep them alive. You know, the larger communities with a larger tax base, that we don't have that same level of responsibility for. Since we're not pulling property taxes out of those communities, I'm very hesitant to see any secondary road money go to that. We would have to cancel projects in the rural area to help fund out of this fund. So, I, I'm not saying that it shouldn't be done, or that it isn't needed, but what I would encourage the board is to look at other funding sources other than secondary roads for that money.
So, is my understanding correct that the agreement that was signed per the annexation part set us up to be able to do this, but has not done this already? Is that a fair characterization?
It has not been done at this point in time, no. We have not seen that annexation follow through.
Okay. Any other questions for the engineer?
As far as Simco funds or other funds that we may be able to tap into, do you think there's anything from a grant perspective we might be able to bolster our application with a city and a county working together?
I don't believe it's federally eligible on frontage road. Since it's a local access area, area service road, it, it would not be eligible for any of the federal funds that we might be able to obtain through Simco. I'm not sure there's enough developable ground upon the portion that's all county from Fair Street going up to the top of the hill in front of our other maintenance building to create any development ground. You know, we have the fairgrounds at our back. We have a, a growing business that's immediately west of our current shop up at the top of the hill. They have now the vet clinic, Dollar General. There's, there's just really one small lot that's only got a garage on it where a business might be able to settle in unless the trailer park in that house that are east of my buildings would be redeveloped. So, I'm not sure this is something I could go out and, and reach out to a RISE grant or a 50/50. There just isn't enough potential for development there, based on my knowledge of the grants that would be available to us.
Thank you very much. Other questions of the engineer?
I guess one other question would be, do you feel like the estimates are accurate for 2,100 feet of pavement? And are we talking water sewer repairs? I don't remember what was all.
The 600,000?
Was it 2 million total cost, right?
No, that's what we initially started with back five, six years ago, so the only remaining cost for the project.
Come up to the mic, though, for a second.
Yeah. I, I think what he was looking at was 665 for the county share. We recently did the 2,100 feet in front of the dairies on Dallas Avenue. That came in a little over 330,000. It, it's better to be conservative, but, you know, for just street that, I, I would guess, you know, I, I haven't looked at the square yards that were, are available there, or the square yards that would need to be done. I, I'm guessing that would be a little bit high when you start throwing in water, storm sewer. The water currently only goes to the east side of our property, and we don't have a storm sewer. Everything exits to ditches. So, we don't have any sidewalks in that area either, so it... Are you including in the 665 the portion that's west of Fair Street?
No, this, the portion that we included for the, for this proposal is just from Third Street to Fair Street and not continuing further up to the county buildings.
Okay.
It's just between Third and Fair Street. So, it'd be stopping at Dollar General, continuing though for the east.
Can you come up to the mic when you got to talk, though? Because it's all recorded. You can share.
Yeah.
I won't, I won't elbow or anything.
So, the, the project that we're proposing is only from Third Street, which would be at the completion of what we've done to frontage road so far, only to Fair Street and that intersection, and not continuing any further east.
What do you think estimated right now costs will be 15, 14 months from now? Let's say that we, they wait until July 1st of...
Our, our trend line has been pushing 10% increases.
So, today's 665, could be tomorrow's 720?
It could be over 7 tomorrow, yeah. Over 700,000 tomorrow. Yeah. Just, just to give you an idea, we let the project in Hornick in 20, October 2021, the cost per square yard of concrete was around $35 per square yard. We let our project on Port Neal Road in June of 2022, five months later, and it was 4850 a cubic yard, or, I mean, a square yard. So, we, we saw almost a 50% increase in the cost. It was a smaller job on Port Neal Road, but you're still looking at a significant increase.
So, toward that end, and this is, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but I'm just, we're in information gathering mode. Is the City of Mowville prepared to do something sooner than July 1st of 2024? Or its funding is not programmatically obligated, or would not be ready otherwise until then?
The city is prepared to put in our portion of the cost for the repairs at any time going forward.
Okay. So, with that, thank you very much, both, and we can call you back up as needed. The question then now moves to Dennis Butler in budget financing. So, it, from, from my perspective, I'm bullish on Mowville. I think you all are very forward-thinking. We've seen the growth there. You're consistently inviting us out to showcase your community. With that being said, I'm not supportive of property taxpayers picking up the bill. We're facing the largest cliff, I think, that we've had in 10 years, and I think you would say that that's accurate in order to keep a flat tax. So, the rural basic levy, the problem is mentioned before, as Mark alluded to, it's going to set one community against the other, or, or unincorporated areas to say, well, what bridge are you going to have to take off in order to do this? But I still think we can do it. I don't know if gaming revenue, I mean, we deplete all of that in a year. So, the two sources of funding I'd like to ask about are local option sales tax, which everybody pays for on a sales tax basis, even out-of-towners. It was voter-approved, and it is constricted to two uses, economic development, which it clearly is, and secondary roads, which it clearly is. So, the question is, what is our unobligated, both FY '24 and '25, look like in those funds?
Well, this is good, guys. Just went through this with Dan here, so he's got a good idea, and a little bit with Mark before the meeting, not realizing this at all. In our unobligated for '24, we are going to have about 200,000 left to obligate if we want to. The problem is, we had 800 and, I believe, 888, 89,000 obligated for '23, '24, which uses up most of our reserve carryover, plus our money coming in. So, if you'd say uses 200,000 and potentially put it toward the road, we'd still have to come up with more money, then you only have 593,000 to divvy out in '24, '25, and you already got 889,000 that we're using to either reduce taxes, fund the event center, things like that. So, there are going to be some real difficult decisions coming up on the use of local option sales tax.
Is the 889 spoken for?
Yes. You very obligated that money, yes.
So, we've obligated 889 for FY '24?
Yep, '23, '24.
But that 889 that's obligated, you're saying there's still a $200,000?
Leftover.
Leftover.
Yes. That's counting the money coming in and our 500 or 491,000 carryover from July 1st of this year.
The 889 is one-time or ongoing expenses? Because that's the million-dollar, almost literally, the million-dollar question. Because if it's one-time, that's one thing, then it's not something that we need to do again in '25?
That, that's our problem. I can give you examples here. This coming year, we're using 71,000 for new position conservation. We're using 358,000 for the naturalists out there at the Nature Center. So, we've already burned up.
358?
Yep.
358,000?
358,000.
For a naturalist?
For the Nature Center.
The Nature Center naturalists combined there.
Okay.
So, those generally would be taxes, but we want to keep the tax rate low this year coming up.
Okay.
So, those are decisions that are going to be made by this board next year. What do we do? We're, we don't have enough money to fund everything. And to give example, this new house file coming in July 1st of 24, '25, we're going to be able to generate approximately 381,000 new tax dollars. In a general basic, 71,000 rural basic. So, when you do the math, we got some severe problems coming up.
Agree with you.
Now, a lot of the other costs, though, like the event center, we got... Now, a lot of the other costs, so like the event center, we got five years ago on that, that's 150,000. We fund the economic development department, all of that, that's 170,000. We fund the soil conservation, that's another 39,000. We fund Sula Initiative, 25,000, that's a choice the board can make there. But a lot of the ones I've said before, we either continue the program, discontinue the program, because we don't have enough money to shift these back to rural basic to fund it. Because the secondary roads is going to run a terrific problem here, and he might want to say something about this, is our minimum levy is in jeopardy. There's no way we can probably meet the minimum levy, so then we lose dollar per dollar. Now, he can't use secondary road money, cause it's probably almost pretty obligated. And then he may have to even cut back there if we don't get the funding. But we have 200,000 to go over into fiscal year 24, 25, unless the board during 23, 24 spends money in there that is already obligated, but new money coming up.
So are we running a deficit on obligated to unobligated funds in 25? In, in other words, you had two, just one.
Go ahead.
You had 200,000 leftover for 24. Are you saying that we will not have 200,000 leftover in 25? Revenue versus expenses, we'll have more than that? Or we need to make sure that we have that answer?
If we fund everything that's obligated for 23, 24, we will be short $74,000 approximately. And that's funding everything, even a county fair.
Wait a second, you said 23, 24, we would have 200,000 left?
Yes.
Okay.
To carry over, you get 2, 593,000 new money, assuming local option sales tax.
You're saying in 25, we would be running the deficit?
So you got 793,000.
Okay.
You're obligated right now 889,000, I believe, he's got the numbers there. So you're short, if we fund everything, then we got obligated this year, do that again 24, 25, we're still short about 80,000. Which means we gotta make some pretty tough decisions, what we fund next year and what we don't fund. Because we can't shift things back that we're using to reduce tax asking now, shift them back, we don't have the ability to do it.
So let me ask you this, if everything was status quo for FY 24 and FY 25, we'd have about 120,000 leftover? If we put on autopilot all the things that we funded this year? Because that $200,000?
Yep.
That you say that we have an $80,000 so-called deficit for 25?
For 24, 25.
Right? We would have, if we did nothing, we would have approximately $120,000 left at the end of 25? If we kept everything that we did, fun, no.
You'd be short about 80,000. Yep. And I went through these, not even knowing what was coming up, to tell Dan, this is kind of where we're at here, we got a problem.
So we really don't have, what you're saying is we really don't have 200,000 sitting there?
Not for 24, at the end of 24, 25.
Okay, so now go from local option sales tax to?
Gaming?
No. Tax increment financing. Is there a way to borrow money from the future? And we've talked about doing, if you want to call it countywide TIF, but is there a way to borrow money from future revenues that don't contemplate taxpayers?
That's what you do with TIFs.
Right, that's what, yeah, I'm just.
The question is, is the road still part of a county road? Because it's in the city, we can't do anything.
It's not.
So that part.
And we kind of talked about, sorry, and we kind of talked about a two-step process, right? What Keith alluded to, don't give a gift that keeps on giving the wrong way.
Right.
Right? So do the improvements, do it pre-incorporation by the, the city? So talk to us about that.
Okay, it is possible to use TIF there. Generally, we don't go as low, it's 665,000 for a TIF project, because you got bonding costs, you got attorney fees, things like that. But we could potentially use that TIF to consolidate two programs. Cause we're talking also about paving the Elk Creek Road from the end of it, where we committed to, to the roundabout, that's about a million dollars. So if we combine the million there, combine the 665 there, make one TIF project for a million six, it makes it more feasible to do it.
What say you, Mr. Engineer?
Well, that would seem to be the most feasible way to come up with the money for, for both. You know, I think both would be eligible projects in that, in that case. And you have adequate capacity to put that into the tax increment finance fine.
Thank you. What does the board think about moving sooner rather than later? If the city of Mowville is willing to, and if the engineer and has said, your cost may be 720 rather than the 665, and this is something we could move the ball downfield on sooner rather than later, I'd just open it up for that discussion.
So I, I would have liked to have done this, you know, four or five years ago. When we discussed it back then, it would have been cheaper then. And we had more available funds then. But of course, with any crystal ball, we don't really know what's going to happen. I mean, I kind of see, you know, a really slow economy right now and food prices are going to go up again. I don't know if, you know, anybody in the egg business knows meat shooting up again right now. When groceries are already hard to buy. So that could have a, a very good effect on construction prices though in the future, because guys might go and take that higher paying construction job that's harder work if they need more money. Sometimes your, your bid price can come down. It happened in 08 and 09, and the city was able to get a lot more building projects done than it ever expected, because a lot of those bid prices came down in a, in a weaker economy. There's the other side of that, is that concrete prices as a commodity is going up. So with one of these things, it's almost like you plan and you follow the schedule you got, and you get what you get, you know, as far as a bid price. I think we could try to push it up. But then we could miss out on what bid prices could be in a year. Or you try to, you know, do it right away and then prices go up anyway. You know, you don't know. The timing of Elk Creek Road, is that going to be in line with this?
Does it need to be in terms of? Does it need to be in terms of you can borrow the money and then do one project today and one project in three months?
I, I believe that's the way it can be structured. They don't have to be let at the same time each. You, you borrow the money and it's sitting there awaiting the completion of the plans. We're looking, I believe, toward fall for the plans to be ready and the right-of-way acquired for Elk Creek Road. We've got the design well underway. They're currently plating right-of-way is the portion that they're at now. Right-of-way acquisition is the next step. That's Elk Creek Road.
To me, I, I think Mowville's been good enough to be forward thinking, which a lot of times we get requests, like, could we do this next week? And so kudos to you for thinking out 13, 14 months in advance. But to me, it seems as if it's an artificial schedule, because you're giving us that much lead time to be able to, as Brett alluded to, contemplate in our budget this next year. But if we can, if we're talking about doing this through TIF either way, if we did TIF today or TIF in 14 months, it's immaterial to the budget. Plus, we get the added benefit of subsuming in Elk Creek Road, which frees up other bandwidth for, for projects. To me, it's a win-win. Whether prices go up, prices go down, it's, it's so hard to predict at this point.
Sure. And I, you know, Mark, you might have a better insight as to when's the best time to bid a project too? Cause typically, if you bid in December, or you're getting the guys that are hungry for work versus?
Yeah, we like to try and time paving projects in the November, December, January timeframe, because that's when the contractors are trying to fill their schedule for the following year. When you're pushed back into March, April, May, they're just looking for that one extra job and, and, you know. My opinion is you generally don't get quite as good a prices as you do when you, when you get that fall timing, when they're trying to fill that schedule.
Can you and Dennis, I don't want to get too into the weeds, you know, we might lose some YouTube watchers. But if we went from a TIF financed project that was county-owned and then it eventually transitioned, how does that have to work in terms of, do you have to pay off that increment before letting Mowville annex it in? Or is it, you know, once the project's done? Or is that a question for legal counsel on a bonding attorney?
Well, it could be with our bonding attorney, but also we did borrow $8 million, $10 million to do secondary roads, which goes right up to the city limits. So as we're spending money of TIF money, it's all sitting there. So it's just the same thing here, we didn't have the money sitting there. But they could annex those gravel roads, roads in after we do the gravel to it, so it'll be the same scenario. So I don't think it really matters. Now, we can check with Jason or Bondi, or we'll check with Dano's, who's our TIF financing guy. But I'm pretty sure it wouldn't matter, but we can check into that. But if they have the money available, let's don't wait till 24, 25. And the new house file 718 does not affect debt service. It does not affect general subs. So we can borrow the money without any, without any restrictions.
If you'll recall, we pursued a, a joint city-county agreement with the interchange, because it was so much larger scope and project. But there was no requirement. I mean, if the board had chosen out of the goodness of their hearts to just fund that project, you could fund that project. You know, in this case, since that was such a large burden, you were trying not to leave that all on the rural taxpayers. If the cities annexed and began to develop, and the cities appreciating that money being fronted by the board, were willing to help retire those bonds. Now, in the case of Mowville, you, you would possibly just be choosing not to exercise that opportunity.
So another option is to just bond on a regular five-year bond and then pay it off over the next five years through lost or gaming or a combination of lost and gaming?
You wouldn't need to do that. It'd be a regular tax, TIF tax off of new value added, because that would also be part of our secondary road project. We, we got all the roads in for, used it for any TIF, that's how we got the bridge in. That's how we got the 10 million. This would be part of the whole TIF project and additional. So those two, I, we have a third project now, be the Mowville Road.
And the reason I like with TIF is because you're borrowing from future increased revenue. And as we also have CF coming, I mean, that's just growing every year, more and more online. I think that'd be a good.
It, it grows like 3% to 4%, but we're going to be a little limited now with this new law coming, coming in, but.
But it doesn't affect that service, right? That doesn't?
No, it does not affect that service.
So I think that's another salient point.
So, yes. Debt service and general sub are not affected. So everything we can, I hate to say borrow the money, but in this case, it's a good deal. And it's fine, because we need to do something with the Elk Creek Road. So we combine them, do it same time and do it soon.
Supervisor Nelson?
Not to throw a wrench here, but if we're going to go the TIF route, which I think is a good option, do we look at paving also Fair Street to Humboldt Ave? While we're there? I mean, it's the same road, it's equally as bad. I understand why Mowville desperately wants till Fair, to Fair Street done, because that's where a lot of that new development is. But the road on the east side of Fair Street to Humboldt Ave is the same road. It's just as poor, it's just as narrow. And that's what all of our heavy equipment has to take to get into our two county buildings.
So forgive my ignorance, where does, where does our portion stop and start?
That's all county from, from the Dollar General property. On, you know, it's, no, actually, you guys have half the road, I think, Jim? I'm looking back at you. You guys annex Dollar General, correct? So they would have half of the street in front of Dollar General, where we would have the other half, similar to what we have west of Fair Street. Once you get past the Dollar General property, that's 100% county. And it would be part of our urban renewal district, which would be eligible for TIF funding if you chose to do everything at the same time.
But what'd you think? I mean, if we're going to have a paving crew there, doing one side of the street, why don't we not have them finish the other short half mile? When it's such a decrepit road, anyway?
That would, that would be up to the board's discretion and direction.
What would that add in terms of costs?
I want to say that's about a half a mile. So if we're not adding sewer, we've already got water up to the, we've already got water going up to the end of our property. Depending on, I, I would look for the city to fund if they wanted to expand their water. But if we're just looking at the road issues, it should be under a million. I would say probably in the 800, 900,000 range, just off the, off the top of my head. This, again, looking at what we spent on Port Neal Road.
So 800, 900,000 for that additional half mile or for the whole?
About 800,000 for that additional half mile. 800, 900,000. I believe we'd get it done in that range with the same 27-foot top, but without any utilities.
Sure.
So that more than double what is being asked right now, is that?
But then also you have the challenge that, okay, so now Mowville wants to grow that direction and annex, and now they gotta rip it up to put sewer in.
Well, and again, they could contribute to our project going farther west.
Pay for the sewer side.
I mean, there, there might be advantages if they're, if they're annexing that, the business west of our, north, or north of our old shed, the trailer park and a, and a couple houses. You know, having that water extended may not be a bad deal for those properties. But again, I would leave that to Mowville. But that would be a cost, we have not participated in. When we do work in our small towns under 500, that accessory work and utility work that we do while we're disturbing the street is paid for by those cities. That would have to be paid for by them, I feel.
Thank you, Mark. Is there any response and as we?
So we haven't taken into too much cover, like discussions, I suppose, into the infrastructure going that far to the east up to Humboldt Avenue. We have previously had discussions about the possibility of annexing some of those areas. So I, I wouldn't want to give an answer right now, but it's definitely something that I would take back to a council meeting, sit down with everybody and get a, get a whole consensus of where we feel. And then talking to the city engineer and our public works gentleman to get a better idea of what that would look like.
Supervisor Nelson?
Yeah, and I didn't mean to throw a wrench or anything. I just think if we're talking about it, and if we're going to do TIF, we may as well have this conversation. And, and I think you guys are going to want to continue to grow that way and probably develop it. And if it, the, the road is just as bad. So at some point, we're going to want to address it anyway. I mean, whether it's today or five years from now. So it's just whether we want to go through that process twice, if we could just do it all at once, so.
And I would agree, and it's definitely an area that we want to grow. But in order to get that, we would have to put together costs. And then we're wanting to, if, if we're wanting to do it earlier than, you know, sooner or later, because of the potential cost increase, and we would have to sit down and look at what that cost is going to be for our portion of the infrastructure as well, to see if it's feasible. So I don't want to say yes or no at the moment, but I think it's definitely worth consideration.
I mean, there's, the sewer would have to be, would almost have to be on the south side of, of the road, because our water main is on the, on the north side at this point in time. But with the limited number of properties you're serving, boring under the road wouldn't require that that road surface be disturbed if at some point in time sewer were to be added. Sanitary sewer is the real challenge out there. I don't know where the nearest main is. But all of the properties from Fair Street East are currently served by septic systems, including both of my buildings.
Dennis, how much heartburn does it give you? If you take Elk Creek, add in the, the base costs of what we talked about tonight, 665, I think it was, adding in a potential 850, 900? If you take all three of those and combine them together, and the source of revenue is TIF, how much heartburn does that give you?
Doesn't give me any heartburn.
Okay.
It's something that's probably needed, and we borrowed a lot more money than that before. And over five years, you aren't talking big payments anyway. In five years, it's done. Five years goes by pretty fast. Now, it won't affect, now I'm thinking down the road too, because we're going to have to come up with money for the interstate interchange, but we will have plenty of TIF revenue available to do this project with the three things involved. And also do the project for the I-29.
So in, in wrapping up this discussion, it seems to me that, and, and you all can speak, if I'm mischaracterizing anything, it seems like there is a willingness and an appetite on behalf of this board to, to move and to potentially do something sooner rather than later. I would not put you all on the spot in some sort of group discussion, but because this is an information item and we can't act on it anyway tonight, would look to your direction for Supervisor Nelson's rejoinder and asking, is that something that you would put forward as a proposal that you would want to cost share in? And then ask that you would come before the board in the next week or? week or two weeks? I mean, there's not a a real rush, but I think we could do something sooner rather than later, is my sense, given the source of funding that we're looking at. And just applaud you for bringing forward the proposal. I think it's a good example of being able to jointly work in a cooperative way.
Yeah, and I greatly appreciate the consideration, and that was the intent of of coming here, right, to open the the conversations early and figure out how we can get this financially taken care of. So we'll definitely go back and we'll put it under consideration into the the progression from that point. So we still want to keep the same proposal from third to fair. But I'll definitely go back um and during the next meeting and open up that discussion from Fair Street to Humboldt and get back to you.
Great. And my encouragement would be sometime in the next week, two weeks, three weeks, you know. Okay. So that would be a great follow-up. We'd love to have you back and see if we can get something done.
Sounds great.
Any other thoughts from any other supervisors? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming. Next item on the agenda is item eleven, Building Services. Our Building Services Director Kenny Schmitz, approval to expense ARPA thirteen funding for furniture fixtures and equipment not to exceed nine hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Kenny?
Building Services, Kenny Schmitz. Um, this is a continuance of May twenty-third, uh twenty-third of board meeting, uh agenda item eight, um specifically eight A. Um, previously, at that meeting, the board approved uh five hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-nine cents uh for furniture through office elements and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and four cents for kitchen equipment and installations for a total of six hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and eleven ninety-three um from the ARPA thirteen uh expense uh funding expense of four or nine hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Um, I'm requesting to expense that total nine hundred and forty-one thousand dollar ARPA fund um as continuance from that meeting. Uh, I provided a backup list in your agenda items. Uh, that is a snapshot of what uh entails some of those costs of approximately remaining three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Um, the list I provided actually is totaling three hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine fifty-three. That is not a complete list. There are other items that I missed, but that is a a good snapshot uh of a majority of what those costs would go into. Uh, the the purchase of this FFNE equipment is something that uh is not under a Building Services Director per view. So there are many, many items to cover. I think of uh items almost daily that, oh, shoot, we missed that, or I missed that. Um, things like uh office chair mats. Uh, those are totaling three thousand dollars. They're not on this list. Um, restroom trash containers that add up to like a thousand dollars are not on this list. Um, so just quirky things like that.
Thank you, Kenny. So just help me out here. There's nine hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. And so the first motion that you're asking is to be able to expense that funding that has previously been designated from the board as ARPA being the source of funding. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Then item B is approximately five hundred thousand dollars um to approve the office elements purchase order, which leaves about four forty-one, or is this that that there have been previous elements that we have, our items that we've already approved?
Yes, you've previously approved uh eight B and C. Um, so I'm just looking for approval of eight A.
Okay, so eight B and C are not necessary.
That's correct.
Okay. So we've got approximately the other four hundred and forty-one thousand. What you have listed here is the remainder that you were covering or?
Um, this is just a snapshot of what I expect those costs to be.
The difference between the nine forty-one and the the five eighty-three that we've already approved?
Yes, you've actually approved six hundred and seven, three eleven ninety-three. So the difference would be three hundred and thirty-three, six eighty-eight oh seven.
That makes sense to me now. So you've given us, this is what I have left over. We asked for this to be broken down a little bit, and we understand, I think, that there's going to be small things, incidentals, so to speak. But this gives, I think, the board an accounting of what you're approximating in these different line items that we would expect in a budget, and I I'm comfortable with it. So with that, I would move eight A and a motion to expense ARPA thirteen funding for furniture fixture and equipment uh not to exceed nine hundred and forty-one thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Bittenger. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. And the motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Kenny. So there's no other motions required, in my opinion. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate all your work. Item twelve is County Auditor Pat Gill, eight or twelve A is approval to increase the hourly rate of pay for township bookkeeping duties to twenty dollars an hour beginning July first, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Gill.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to supervisors. Uh, and what you have before you are three items that are the result of a township trustee training that we did trustees and clerks. Uh, we went out to had a meeting, had a full room of township officials. And the first thing they brought up was they wanted a raise for the clerks to do the bookkeeping. For years, it's been seven twenty-five. Clerks and township trustees are hard to recruit. And so anything we can do that they're asking for, I think we should provide them that opportunity. So uh when I said, right away, they said, uh, you know, we need a raise. I said, who's in favor of that? The entire room went up. And then I said, well, how much? And somebody said twenty dollars, and the entire room went up again. So that's pretty much the message that I'm bringing to you is that uh they wanted a raise to twenty dollars. And it would be helpful to do that as far as getting people to uh take those positions.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion? Supervisor Nelson.
Contrary to popular belief, I do get calls other than rural roads and how and their condition sometimes. And this was actually one of them. I had someone that called and said um they would like to see a raising and throw out a specific number, but that this was something that they said. So um, I appreciate you bringing that forward, and I look forward to discussion on that. So.
Supervisor Bittenger.
Do we know, do you know, um, Mr. Gill, how, what are the, what's the comparison? Like, what are other, what are other township clerks paid? Do you know, like, is everybody, do we have any idea or just a range?
I just know twenty dollars sounds like a lot right now, but it's not, you know, next year, it's not going to be. That's just the way things are. And like I said, this is something that I think they would really appreciate and uh help us maintain the folks that are in those positions.
Penny to the rural basic is what, about twenty-three?
The what?
Penny to the rural basic levy.
Oh, it's about twenty-three, but nowadays you can't go by that either.
Sure.
With the new restrictions coming up. But this will take effect this coming fiscal year, so we need to probably just take out cash reserves. It isn't a whole lot of money.
No, it's not. I was just saying, it's like a tenth of a cent to the levy. So I was just looking at as a mathematical figure that, you know.
And it's not a full-time job. It's a part-time job. So it's hard to find people to want to do it.
Well, I'll move it.
Mr.?
Sorry.
Supervisor Ong.
As the former Chair of Grant Township, I support this request. I think if uh the board's placed a similar position again because of issues like this, it's, the cost is obviously expanded when you have the whole county apparatus and the auditor's office helping with the bookkeeping. So that's my comment.
Thank you very much.
So there's a motion?
There's a motion on the table uh by Radig, second by Nelson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none from here nor from afar. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay, and the motion carries five to zero. Next item is item twelve B, approval of authorizing the chairman to sign an agreement with Neapolitan Labs to provide township page in the Woodbury County website. Mr. Gill.
Uh, this also came as a result of the training that we did. Uh, it's just difficult, you know, those folks, they're working too, and it's hard for them to get information. And most of the time, they're doing this, you know, in the evenings and that sort of thing. So it's just uh what we're looking for in the uh website enhancement, uh, it would just be a lot easier for Dr. Scaff to be able to communicate that information to him, put it out there, and also receive the information that they have because they have to post budgets and financial reports. And it'd be a lot easier for us just to keep track of those things. And it'd be a lot easier for uh folks, the trustee officials to share information. That's one thing that they thought would be really beneficial to them, to be able to look at other townships, what they're doing.
No, to me, the the cost. Grant Township Chairman, Mr. Ong.
Yes, as a former chairman of Grant Township, I have a question. Um, would the agendas be able to be posted here, Mr. Gill?
Uh, yes, they would be able to post them online. Uh, I think technically we still have to post them on our our bulletin board upstairs, but uh that's where it would be very nice to have that and very transparent to have that information out there for folks to see.
Thank you. Former chairman of the Grant Township has no further questions.
Thank you, Supervisor Ong. So with that being said, I know this is a small amount. Does this come from?
Gaming.
Gaming, I concur.
It's a one-time cost, but yeah.
Yeah, and we did it for our getting on the same system with the county out of gaming. It's minimal. It's one time.
I'd make the motion to approve the agreement, uh, authorizing the chairman to sign an agreement with Neapolitan Labs to provide a township page in the Woodbury County website with the source of funds of twelve hundred and fifty dollars from gaming revenue.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Nelson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. And the motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Item twelve C is approval to require Woodbury County Township clerks provide a bond of twenty thousand dollars. Mr. Gill.
Uh, you set the, you're required by code, the Board of Supervisors, of the amount of the surety bond that township clerks have to have. Uh, we can't find it anywhere if we ever did that before, but that's what you're required to do. We've been checking on uh bonds and that, and it's been going back and forth because we thought we were covered and then I thought we weren't, but it appears now that we are covered. But I do have uh put the question to Joshua. He hasn't uh responded yet, but uh this part doesn't do any harm because uh this is what you're required to do and twenty thousand dollars is the minimum, I think that they said. So.
So Melissa, in our blanket coverage, these guys would be covered? And do we already set it at twenty thousand? That's, I guess, curiosity questions.
The question just is, is whether uh the insurance company actually understands that relationship between trustees and the county.
And the bond. With our blanket coverage, the township clerks would be covered. Um, actually, it's a um a personnel dishonesty blanket policy worth like a million. So we're covered if anything would happen in that area.
If it's legal.
Well, that part's legal. Just don't know if it covers the bonds part, correct?
Yep.
So what we're contemplating tonight, just to make sure that I'm clear, is what the bond amount is?
Yes.
Okay, so not whether or not where it's going to be held or what, we're just setting the amount?
The code section just says you set the bond issue, and that you're required to do that.
And is this, is this typical or pretty standard fare, the twenty thousand?
Yes.
So I would make a motion to require Woodbury County Township clerks provide a bond of twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Bittenger. Is there any further discussion?
I guess, any other counties, do we have what they do, how they pay for it? No idea. Okay.
So the mechanics of this, is this going to be that the township clerks, or that's not what's contemplated tonight?
Uh, if we didn't have what Melissa was just explaining to you, we would have to require them to get a bond, uh, twenty thousand dollars. And then the code actually says that they are responsible for the cost of that uh that bond. But you know, if we can cover it through what we're doing, then we're going to be fine. But this is just something you're required to do, is to set the twenty thousand, and we'll go from there.
So then, I guess, Melissa, is there any chance you could email your fellow uh HR directors or people that do those kind of risk bonding for employees and see if they do it under their main umbrella, or if they have them get their own separate policy in other counties, just just so we know?
Yeah, there's uh what the cost is for a twenty thousand dollar bond is a hundred dollars a year.
Right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay, and the motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The township officials will appreciate that.
Item thirteen, Board of Supervisors, Taylor and Nelson, approval of funding from gaming revenue for repairs to emergency services building in climbing hill, not climbing hills, so. Uh, with that, Supervisor Nelson, do you want to begin and all add on?
Yeah, so this is a follow-up uh from when Supervisor Taylor and Kenny Schmitz and and Scott went out to emergency services and took a look at the building and and some of the repairs and talked about some of, you know, what we wanted to do, whether it was, you know, to to rebuild the building or work on it, whatever the case was going to be. Um, we decided to go ahead and get some quotes on some of the structural items of the building, the roof, the top of the chimney, um steam traps, that sort of things. And so we've just, we've gotten a lot of those quotes back. Appreciate Kenny and and Scott working on that. And actually, I was pretty uh pleased with with what some of the repair costs were. And for, I really think we're getting quite a bit um for the expenses, and I think it's going to um push the longevity of that building down quite a while. So um, anyway, if you got anything else.
Great. And just uh lists for the public's good. Some of the items, we're looking at um some new flooring, chimney repair boiler room services at just under ten thousand dollars. Um, actually cutting um part of that stack, uh replacing twenty-foot of condensate pipe. Um, and then some steam trap repairs, which relate to not only efficient heating, but the efficiency in terms of cost as well. And then really, probably the um the biggest need right now and the most pressing is a roof repair uh at about twenty-two thousand dollars. But I would just differentiate, you know, we talked a couple of weeks ago about a long-term plan, and at that time Prairie Hills being the building that we're thinking about. This is a building that's currently in use and serves a very core function. And for the amount of cost and also mitigating what could otherwise be moisture infiltration, bats and so on, um, it seems like it's a low-hanging fruit and a cost that's well worth it. And talking about the source of revenue, um, I had asked Dennis where we're sitting approximately right now with gaming funds, and this represents less than ten percent of what we have on hand, if that's accurate. So for a total cost of fifty-two thousand, eighty-nine dollars, uh, we talk about, you know, if something comes up, well, this is a something that has come up. Um, and seems like it would be a good, um, good to go ahead and do. And then in the future, I think we're going to take another look at uh what does tuck pointing look like and mean? And is it really an every five to seven-year thing? Or is it something that, um, if it hasn't been done for this long, could be stretched out to more like ten to fifteen? Um, given that there's structural integrity in the building and and some of the other things. But that's a discussion for further time. Anything else you want to?
Well, and we, we got some new uh lounge chairs and kitchen items for the for the workers. Um, and and again, would like to say thanks to the guys and gals out there. They really have taken good care of the building for, and they, a lot of them are, spend a lot of time there. Um, and some of their furnishings were in desperate need of an upgrade, so we're happy to uh oblige that as well. Um, it's important that we treat these people great. And uh, but yeah, we just thank them for the care of the building, and we're hoping that this investment instills that we're, you know, we're appreciative of what they do and the work that you guys do out there. So.
Further discussion?
My question on number one, new chairs for the lounge and kitchen area? Five chairs for a total of four thousand dollars, is that correct? Is that five chairs? That's eight hundred and three dollars per chair. What, can you, can you please?
Correct.
Can you come to Mike, Director Scott, and inform me, what is an $800 chair?
Scott, emergency services, there are, two of the chairs are bigger chairs, because some of us out there aren't the smallest people, but the smaller chairs were a little bit less cost, and I got two different quotes, and that was the, that was the cheapest one on that.
Supervisor Radig, is that on, is that on point?
Well, I think in general, if you look at a big man recliner, they're like 1,500 bucks to 2,000 bucks right now, so that's your, your weight limit with 350-pound guys sitting in them, you know? So, yeah, I think that's right on.
Yeah, I mean, we got, got a really good, good price on the chairs, and then.
So, okay. I'm sorry, just to clarify, we're not talking about chairs like this, we're talking about living area.
It's the reclining chairs they have in the lounge and the kitchen there. Didn't, no, you sat in there and you were there before.
He actually broke one of them, that's why we have to get it.
Yeah, he fell, he fell over backwards, and, yeah.
That's why he wants to know how much they cost, because he's paying for one of them.
That's what I'm, yeah. They're in pretty sad shape. They're in pretty sad shape.
These are recliner, okay, leave your room chair, okay.
Yes, they're, they're quite a bit heavier due to what they had to start with.
That just seemed a little high, I thought if it was a good old chair like this, it would seem, you know.
Well, a lot of, actually, this kind of chair right here is probably 1,600 bucks as well, but a lot of the.
We're not going to get into that discussion, because I'm still, I'm still kind of upset over that whole deal, so.
Yeah, the, a lot of places like the firehouses here in Sioux City will buy new recliners like every, like three to five years, sometimes even faster, because depending on the brands they buy, you know, if they're going for that cheaper upfront price, they maybe last a year, you know?
And you told us these chairs came from?
Other?
Home Furniture.
But they've been there, no?
Well, the ones they got in our come from Menards.
Yeah, Menards, and they've been there how long?
And.
I mean, they're shot.
Well, look at, we bought my mom, before she passed away, we bought her a powered recliner, and that was $32,000 chair. And it didn't stand her up, it just reclined back and, you know, that, you know, so cost-wise, comparison-wise.
Okay, well, that helps me understand.
And this does include also, Jeremy, we didn't say, this includes bat mitigation also.
Okay.
And cleaning up the bat fetus, and all of that on second and third floor.
Okay, all right, that's all the questions that I have. Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I'm going to be abstaining.
Any other discussion?
I work for a company that made a bid. I didn't know if they got the bid, but.
All right, hearing no further discussion, I will make a motion to approve up to $52,089 in gaming revenue for Emergency Services Director Scott Mitchell and Building Services Director Kenny Schmitz to utilize for budgeted repairs and replacements.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Nelson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay.
And I abstain.
And the motion passes four to zero with one abstention. Supervisor Radig. Item 14, reports on committee meetings. Anything from Supervisor Ong?
Still no power here.
I'm glad the cell service still works. Item 15, item 15, citizen concerns.
Doyle Turner, 2738 200th Street. As you know, I, I go to other county meetings and meet with quite a few people, and I've heard this Board talk about how restrictive our state government has become on you, and I just want to tell you that that, you are not the only ones that feel that way. I know that you had that meeting earlier with great success between Manona and Plymouth and yourselves. There are people that are wanting more of that. I don't know what the legal ramifications or how you go about doing that. It, it seems sad that we almost need to start a new state government in order to combat our existing state government, but I just wanted to put that out there, that, that there are people talking that way in other counties also, and if it's something that, that, you know, maybe this is a discussion that these counties need to have amongst each other.
Well, and that's, they have ISAC or the Association of Counties and things that, you know, that would be, I, I don't know, Matthew, are you still on any kind of leadership role with ISAC?
Uh, no, not formally.
Okay. You know, I think Craig Anderson up in La Mars is, but, you know, that might be something to, you know, try to get on an agenda with ISAC is to discuss, you know, kind of encroachment into local government, local politics, and, of course, all politics is local, right? But, you know, I think.
Yeah, I think, if I could, sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I think a lot of that sentiment is there, and we can certainly try and schedule maybe a certain meeting or communication about that, but when you have luncheons with legislators, obviously, you may just get one to three or four that show up and actually want to mill around for a 15-minute lunch and then leave, frankly, so it, just being there isn't all of it, you know? You have to specifically note the topic, like we did, and invite them to a specific sort of meeting, but yeah, it's a good, good point.
You know, one, one thought is not to make these too big, but, you know, there's power in numbers, and I think that's what, you know, was to me powerful about this, you know, to be able to invite more counties and maybe representative governor's staff or the governor's, so, you know, to try to say, look, these are some of the concerns from some fairly conservative counties that want local control, want independence, believe that property landowners' rights are property landowners' rights, that energy ought not a trump, you know, the day from the federal government and so on, so I, I think those are all very good suggestions and ideas.
I know the auditors, the treasurers, associations, they do have district meetings every quarter possibly. I'm wondering if the Supervisor Association can do the same thing, where then you get maybe 10, 12 counties at a specific location altogether. They do do that for auditors and treasurers, so I don't know why it couldn't happen for supervisors, and that'd be going through the association or ISAC.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Other citizen concerns. Board concerns. I just want to say congratulations to Jeannie?
Jeannie.
Jeannie Woodbury Nelson, a daughter that was born to the Nelsons, take the, took the middle name of the county, which is pretty cool, so, but congratulations, that's great.
I appreciate that. It is not Jeannie Woodbury, although I, I have a special place for Woodbury right here, but Jeannie Sue came Wednesday night, so all the boys in the house are pretty smitten, I guess, so, be a little tired for a little while, so bear with me, but we're getting along okay, so, very good, I appreciate it. I got something fun else that I can talk about. I put a tractor ride on every, every year, Woodbury County, and the sixth annual ride is going to be next weekend. We're going to leave Anthon, the Sheriff's Department's going to be hanging out with us, so hopefully we have some nice day, but if it, if it rains, we'll take it at this point, I mean, we need it, but looking forward to that, and we're going to go through Odo and Smithland, so we're going to cut a pretty good track in the county and looking forward to it, so that's all I got, guys.
Great. Anything else for the good of the cause?
We do have a deal going around, it comes every year again. It was the 99 County Bible reading, that'll be on Saturday, July 8th, outside the courthouse from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, that, they usually contact us to let us know, but that was something that's on the radar again.
Did you say Saturday? Yes. Okay, so I'm just making sure we.
July 8th.
We received an email, so I'll forward it on.
All right, anything else for the good of the cause? Thank you very much for being here, we are adjourned.